For the tenth, it is twelve P M. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, if you don't mind, I'm gonna take the meeting out of order. We do have an executive session first, but we are joined with Ms. Becky Tomlinson, our animal control officer, our town clerk Pam Laborni are here to review some changes to the dog kennel licensing and updating kennel sizes and fees. I'll leave it to either one of you fine young ladies to come up to the podium and discuss.
Good morning, good afternoon, actually.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
I, in conjunction with Rebecca, have redesigned the layout for the kennel fee structure. This is coming to light back several years ago. The state made a change in the state law requiring all dog kennels to have physical inspections by our animal inspector. This means that if someone has four Chihuahuas, she was responsible for going into their home and doing an inspection of their home. After conversations that she had with the state, it was pretty much determined that it probably isn't in the best interest of the town to be doing home inspections for dogs that don't have exterior kennels. So what we did was to change the kennel size. Now, please keep in mind, we have adjusted the individual fees. We've done that twice since two thousand eight. Our kennels have never been changed. These have always remained on the same fees. So this is our opportunity, excuse me, to not only adjust the number of dogs in each kennel, but also to adjust the fee structure so that it will be more conducive for the number of dogs actually in the kennel. Previously, we used to have three kennels, a three to four dog kennel, which we're looking to, were proposing to change to a five to ten dog kennel, which would affect, currently, we have ninety three to four dog kennels. And then we would have to convert the three to four dogs to be licensed individually. The five to ten dog kennel, which is what we propose, we estimate based on our, excuse me, my, our current numbers, we would have fifteen kennels. Do you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay. We would have fifteen kennels, okay? The five to fifteen, which we currently have for fifty dollars, we currently have eighteen of those kennels. And we're basing on the numbers, excuse me, we're looking to go and change that from to eleven to nineteen dogs. And we would end up affecting four in our current numbers. Four, there would be four kennels under that. And fifteen plus dog kennels is what we currently have. We have three of those right now. Those are typically our breeders. And we're proposing to change it to nineteen plus for a cost of two hundred versus the hundred. And it would only affect two, excuse me, two individuals in town.
Okay. Questions, gentlemen? So I guess all you're looking for, Ms. Laborni and Ms. Tomlinson, is a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four proposed sizes and rates?
That would be correct. And one thing that I did forget to mention is it will add a few thousand dollars in additional revenue that we didn't have before. And that's on the minimum side, basing, basing it on all spayed and neutered dogs.
Is there a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four proposed sizes and rates?
So moved.
For kennels?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Laborni. Thank you, Ms. Tomlinson.
Thank you. Now that we can get to work with the notifications.
Pam, you want a coffee drop before you leave?
Oh, do you have one? Oh, that'd be great. Thank you.
I almost never have coffee drops.
Thank you very much.
All right, next gentleman, you go back to number one, executive session. To go into executive session on the general law, chapter thirty-eight, subsection twenty-one B three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, pending litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body, the chair so declares, and the board will return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session. Roll call vote, Mr. Ankle?
Yes.
Mr. Wona?
Yes.
And I am a yes. We are now in executive session. All those in favor? Roll call vote, Mr. Ankle?
Yes.
Mrs. Dokonwona?
Yes.
And I am a yes. We are now back in open session, regular session. So we've already done the review of changes of, it's a review of an approval of the fall town meeting warrant. Article one, Mr. Kelly, you wanna go through them? And I'll just jump in when I feel to jump in.
Article one, prior year bill.
You don't have to go through everything either, Mr. Kelly. We just talked, you know what it is to pay prior year bills and the amount, please?
Five thousand and eighty dollars and sixty-nine cents. Bottom line.
Is there a motion to approve article one?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article two.
Article two, amendments to the FY twenty-four budget. Line one thirty-five, town accountant, fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty. Line nine fourteen, group health and general insurance, seventy-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-six. For a total of eighty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-six.
So for the record, there's been a change. There is a restructure supposed to take place. But as we said in the previous meeting, if the employees doesn't agree to it, we want to do a restructuring, and the employee has not agreed to the restructuring. So we've eliminated all three of those, for those restructuring positions. So now it just reflects, as Mr. Kelly noted, line item number one thirty-five, town accountant, professional and actuary services. Line item number nine fourteen, group health insurance and general insurance, liability injured on duty, health insurance, and unemployment insurance. Is there a motion to approve article two?
With amendments.
With amendments.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article three is the acceptance of a provision of the Modernization Act. And we're doing that under advice of town council by saying that the nineteen eighty-nine legislation, that was a modernization municipal finance, is, is in chapter fifty-nine, section two A. So the sentence will state, notwithstanding the foregoing, and will go through, and it changes the time for certification of new growth.
To correspond with calendar year versus the end of the town's current fiscal year, which is June thirtieth, correct?
It changes from calendar year to fiscal year.
Oh, sorry, the other way around. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve article three?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article four.
Article four rescinds the borrowing that we presented to town meeting in the spring for the EMS ambulance. The reason we're rescinding it is, will be evident in the next article.
Correct.
Motion to approve article four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article five is the capital expenses. It includes six hundred and ten thousand for the ambulance. It includes sixty-three thousand for a fire chief car. It includes forty-one thousand one twenty-eight for the lease closeout for the electric cars. And it includes fifteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-one, which is the town's percentage, twenty percent of the grant for the Chrysler Voyager, which will be handicapped accessible. All of that's coming from free cash. And that is, I'm just doing the addition for what we did upstairs.
Subtraction.
Subtraction, sorry. Seven hundred and twenty-nine, eight forty-nine. Right? I saw you with the calculator.
So the total on article number five, correct, would be seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Motion to approve article five with amendment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article six is to purchase the cardiac monitors. We are using eighty thousand dollars from free cash, which is actually the amount transferred into free cash from the opioid settlement funds and twelve thousand dollars from the ambulance reserve funds, for a total of ninety-two thousand.
So again, this is eighty thousand dollars, to be clear. Eighty thousand dollars was given from that opioid settlement. That went into free cash.
It has to pass through free cash.
Correct. So, and for accounting purposes, then we're just extracting that settlement back out of free cash, and we're adding complement, and now we're twelve thousand bucks.
From the ambulance reserve.
Correct. Is there a motion to approve article six?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article seven is a transfer from free cash to the capital expense stabilization fund. As the board knows, we have an awful lot of capital projects that are in the pipeline, including Slocum Street. And I'm asking that it be amended to a hundred thousand from a hundred and fifty thousand.
Is there a motion to approve article seven? With the amendment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article eight is transfer from free cash of two hundred thousand into the OPEB trust fund. That would bring the trust fund to one million, two hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. We have recently transferred it out of PRIM, which was costing the town money. That was a state organization that invests OPEB funds. And we've gone to PARZ, which is a similar organization, but high, pushed or organized by the Plymouth County. And it has a far higher return on the investment. So I'm asking for two hundred thousand dollars.
Is there a motion to approve article eight?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article nine, Mr. Kelly, I'll just, I'll hit on this one real quick, so we can.
All right.
The golf course capital expenses, they were looking for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The last go-around, gentlemen, we've, I threw out some numbers that they have. You know, the cash burn rate is high. And then they have a hundred thousand dollars in their reserve from their budget. That's always available to them, but has to be our prior approval by the board of selectmen. But they also have an outstanding article with a remaining a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in change, giving them two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Since that conversation, the chairman of the golf committee has sent over an email with an explanation of, you know, some further discussion with the folks that are supposed to come up and, you know, assess the golf course. And they came in when we first opened them up. And they, Mr. Wona, you touched point on that, that they came up and they should be giving us an update. They're looking for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, that's a lot of money for, we'll just call it free cash, sitting around allowing to be spent out of that account. I'm comfortable, based on seeing what they said there. Their absolute needs would be, comes out to like three hundred and sixty-six thousand, if I remember that email correctly. I'm okay with going up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in additional money that they would need, and that would put them over that three sixty-six threshold for their immediate needs. Again, it all needs on board of selectmen approval before they can expend. But it hits their target and gives them a few extra dollars to spend above that. But obviously, everything comes through us. But for the purpose of this article, I think it's an unreasonable ask with all the additional money that they still have available. So just move to give them, authorize them a hundred and twenty-five thousand, fifty percent of the ask.
So moved.
Article nine is approved, cancel and ended.
Second. As soon as I get a second. So there's a motion to amend to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars because of all their other funding that they have available to them. So, motion to approve article nine. Ms. Bavaris, did you have, did you have any hand up?
Yeah, I was just saying that he's on his way here. He gave me a call. Mr. Tibbles.
Okay. Who?
Steve Tibbles.
Oh, too late. I don't know. You can tell him to turn around, please.
All right, so a motion?
Do you get a motion, a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Dave, you and I?
Not for I?
Yep. Motion passes.
Article ten is an appropriation from the community preservation funds of seventy-five thousand, adding to article thirteen from the November fourteenth, twenty-twenty fall special town meeting concerning the improvements to Light Street. And that has been, the meetings have been held by the community preservation committee, and their recommendation was the seventy-five thousand.
Is there a motion to approve article ten?
Motion to approve article ten.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article eleven.
Article eleven.
Planning.
This is.
Special permit time limit.
Correcting the special permit time limit. The Commonwealth and its wisdom increased it to three years. This will bring it back to the two-year period that the town wanted. And it also adds wording that allows the planning boards some flexibility if they need to give an extension to give less than two years. Because in the prior, they thought they would only have to, they were only able to give extensions of exactly two years.
Motion to approve article eleven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article one is approved.
Article twelve, special residential development over fifty-five, I believe, the board of Congress.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, as you know, I've been serving as the point person on this issue for the board. And an opportunity to meet with, I was, I attended the planning board's hearing last week with Mr. Kelly. And it was a really good discussion. And I'll sort of paraphrase what I presented to the planning board in my comments. Over fifty-five housing or elderly housing, I think is a serious need. We all do. We've all talked about it in some shape or form. And we, while we have something technically on the books, it does not provide a roadmap at all. It leaves the town extremely vulnerable. In addition, if we don't take action, it would leave us vulnerable to forty B development, which we don't want to see. I think the highlights of the initial proposal are, one, we have the option to go with by right or by special permit. We opted for a special permit to give the town more oversight and control. We opted, if we took the by right option, we lose all oversight. And there are multiple opportunities for sets of eyes on this. I think the number is like ten different sets of eyes between planning, conservation, border health, you know, board of selectmen, and so on and so forth. So I think there's a great deal of oversight. But the planning board, look, they had some comments. And in your document is the, in yellow and red, is what they offered up in the form of changes. So like, for instance, in track size, they increased the number, minimum frontage to a hundred and fifty from fifty. They wanted to make sure it was in alignment with what we currently have in place now for other things. Also, they looked at, you know, no more than thirty-five feet, but only, you know, two floors of living space. But also wanted to make sure that we didn't restrict it to allow, you know, somebody want to put a developer wanted to put in a garage and parking, which I think is reasonable. So a lot of the changes, you know, they addressed parking. They could grant a waiver on parking places. They wanted to make sure, again, that if somebody has a unit, that there's an ancillary lot, or they want to make sure that, you know, that people were visiting. That's addressed. So I don't believe that what was presented materially changes the intent, but just refines it in certain ways, which I think, you know, overall is, will make the product better. And, you know, that's the point of the plan. We've got people there with a level of expertise, who are either in the field or in the, you know, the trade, that could help, you know, provide us with a better product. In addition, there were some folks in the audience who had some real good points as well. So this is what's before, before you, the planning board's changes. I know you've had a chance to look at them. They voted that they would accept, that they would endorse, provided that we accepted their changes. But I don't know, gentlemen, if you have any builds on this that we want to bring back to the planning board, I'm the facilitator here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wona. Thank you for your communication along with the town administrator, Mr. Kelly, with this bylaw, working with planning board. And I've reviewed, I've reviewed their changes, and I've had actually an opportunity to speak with a couple of members of the planning board over some of their changes and provide me some clarification on, you know, some of the do's and don'ts of what's going on. And I do have a concern about the last clause where, you know, that's why I'm, I would ask for, you know, we hold that this bylaw be held and let it go back to review and then come back to the board of selectmen because we have some issues. Well, I have some issues. So one of those ones I talked to with members of the planning board, but I want, I want to be able to go to town meeting with their recommendation attached to print. I spoke to them on the track size. So on the standard track size, we talked with their multiplier of three, based on the track size, fifty acres in both of the districts, sewer and non-sewer districts that we talk about in the thing, going to fifty acres. I feel like that's, that's, you know, it could be extreme in certain areas where there's not a lot of tracks that land at fifty, but there's enough to make a huge impact in the town of Acushnett, fifty acres. The multiplier is three, so they would get a hundred and fifty dwelling units in one SRD. I spoke with them to change that fifty to thirty. And they were in agreement with that, and also in part of that discussion for the non-sewer area, at least for the non-sewer area, the parameters were fifteen to fifty. I'm asking for consideration that, you know, we keep both of them, track size is at thirty, but lower that threshold for the non-sewer area down to ten acres from fifteen to make it maybe a more appealing to somebody developing in the north side versus everything being crammed into the village side. I think it makes a lot of sense for the town. So that's, that's one of the ones that I've got on there. I think four, there's been so many versions because of, we looked at other bylaws, and I think it's just more of a text typo, communication breakdown of just so many versions of what we're gonna do as a town of Acushnett versus what other communities do. So my recommendation, so that it makes a little more sense on maximum number of dwelling units is just quite frankly, strike, strike the first line. So basically, number four should just read, "The maximum number of residential dwellings per acre of buildable area shall be determined by multiplying the buildable area expressed as acres by the number three." Strike out that whole next section, and then, because it doesn't make any sense with dwelling units and bedrooms, just going, and I think it's just a texting. "In order to achieve the maximum development as allowed, under the book measures, the applicant must demonstrate compliance with all of the standards identified in section C." Be done with it. I think, you know, a couple of sentences tells us, tells us what we, what the planning board needs to do in determining the amount of dwelling units in this district. And I think it gives the flexibility to the planning board. So, you know, I, I'm just not, I'm not gonna go through every change that planning board did because it was already vetted with planning, so I'm not gonna talk about all that. Just some extra things that I think that we need to send back through Mr. Kelly. And that's that. I don't have anything on twenty-four. Mr. Ankle, oh, twenty-four, just striking out, Acushnett Wetlands Protection by law, Jamie, on number two, okay, sir? And just put Wetlands Protection Act. And I don't know, if I'm going through this, can you, if you have anything on pages?
Yeah, you're all set with page twenty-four, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I am, but I just don't want to be, you know, the only one, and then we go back. So if there's, if we go through a page where you have something, or Mr. Wona, you have any concerns, again, I'm not gonna go back through everything that the planning board's done. We seen the changes, I agree.
I'll just say this, for my participation, my changes and my ads reflected what was presented to the planning board and you guys. And I left, we left enough stuff there to be, you know, considered to.
So.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple little things under number seven on page twenty-five. Little things like changing the setbacks between buildings. They adjusted it from fifty to forty. But down below, they also wanted the provision to, at a discretion, allow twenty-five percent of the buildings to have minimum setbacks. So you have to just change that to thirty.
Okay. So, Mr. Kelly, thirty, is Mr. Ankle's recommendation?
Right.
I don't have anything. So many of these to review.
Mr. Chairman, on twenty-six, in parking, there's a typo after the word more. There should be inserted the word less.
Oh, yeah, I see my note that I've provided, that no single accessory parking shall contain. It should have said, no less than?
Contain.
No less than. Is that what we're doing?
No, it says up top, it says no. The no before single takes a place of not down there.
Hold on a second. Uh, single accessory parking shall contain less than?
One space per residential.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just looking at multiple versions here again.
Yeah.
But it's all good. So we've, twenty-six, any questions on twenty-seven? Any questions on twenty-eight? Questions on twenty-nine? Questions on thirty? Thirty-one.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just like at the top one there, I believe it references, reference G from page thirty, continued on to page thirty-one at the top. After units to be owned, should also say owned and rented, or owned, rented and occupied. So add rented after owned.
Good. Any other changes on thirty-one before I get going?
The bottom one?
The alias felt it so to up in the days.
Well, impact analysis, I think, is the chair.
Yeah, I was waiting for Mr. Ankle.
Sorry, I have to jump in here, sorry.
I'm going.
If you want to continue there, I'll keep going through this.
Okay. So on the impact analysis, the one thing, and on fault planning, you know, I thank them very much for what they did. But it says, it says, "A narrow report satisfactory to the planning board." It goes through, I punch listed a bunch of things. One of them is water, and what's missing is sewer. So it's fine that the detail in the impact of the proposed project on the town's capacity to furnish services include but not limited. and not limited to roads, traffic. It says water, add the word sewer, slash sewer, and then continue on and sanitation of emergency services. But down in the reports from town boards and agencies, the planning board cannot take over jurisdiction, nor would I think, or assume that they are trying to take that over. But it doesn't say anything. It just says failure of other boards to make a written recommendation or submit a written report within thirty-five days, a receipt of application shall be deemed lack of opposition. However, there is a provision up top that says plans shall be approved by the police chief and fire chief for their responsibilities. I think there needs to be a provision that says plans shall be approved by the water and sewer commissioners for all connections made to the town. Water and sewer infrastructure shall be approved. Is that, um, you agree?
Yep. I have one more on that bottom of the page.
Okay, thirty-one. We're still on thirty-one, Mr. Hinkley?
Yep.
So, Mr. Kelly, you have that note?
Yes.
I can give you it after, if you don't have it written down. I know, I talked, I talked to you earlier and before.
We're gonna have to go back and forth on the word.
I talked, I know, I talked to you this morning on a few things, so I'm assuming you have it done. Mr. Hinkley, sorry?
Sure, no problem. Failure of other boards or agencies to make written recommendation or submit a written report within thirty-five days, I believe should be changed to sixty to give boards time to actually respond to any questionable applications.
Okay. Mr. Lona, any, any concerns?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
You good? All right. Page thirty-two, I have nothing. Page thirty-three, um, I think, hold on one second, gentlemen, I jump into my old one because, uh, so one of the things I spoke with Mr. Kelly this morning, early this morning on is, you know, there was some language about a tract of land subject to the special permit under this section shall not be further divided. That's still there. The problem is, there's nothing there as a protection for the community and the residents of Acushnet where if somebody goes to the planning board and says, I'm building, I have ten acres of billable area, and it says it won't be subdivided any further. But if you have ten acres and the multiplier is three, you could put twelve, thirty dwelling units in a, in a water and sewer area. Let me get that straight. There's a difference for non-sewer. And that's thirty units. But nowhere is there a protection for the community and the residents that are near one of these things for further down the road for it to be chopped off. If somebody takes ten acres and says, I put thirty units in, but I stuffed it in six or seven acres, those other three to four acres, you would assume would be part of that tract of the SRD where it was originally worded, but that's been a little bit changed and modified. So I want Mr. Kelly's put in the special permit, the order of conditions in a plan with a note that the section or tract of land shall not be further divided, shall be recorded and registered needs. I think that hits all the, the bolts that it needs to hit. That's kind of how they're written in other communities where it's in, you know, it says in perpetuity in some of the bylaws, but I think there's got to be a protection there. So that that land can't be further subdivided down the road. Whether it's five years, ten years, twenty years, what we do today has an impact on the future of our community. So I'd like to at least try to do what we can to look out for. Is that an agreed upon change from the board of selectmen? Okay. Uh, I don't have, you have anything on thirty-three, Mr. Hinkley? Anything thirty-four? The thirty-four is, thirty-four is the N in that is just kind of an explanation that we've already hashed out.
Yep.
So I think that those little changes, Mr. Kelly, I would ask to, you know, motion to refer amendment changes to the planning board.
Sure.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly, could you please schedule a meeting with Mr. Francois, the chairman of the planning board? I don't care if it's a Zoom, if it's easier for people to get together that way without interrupting their night's things, but there's only been a few changes made. I believe that the board of selectmen are in, in agreement with their changes. If there's a few changes on our behalf, I, I, I think it's, it's nice to go to town meeting with their recommendation on, on zoning and other articles of that alike. Agree?
Yeah, agree. Mr. Chairman, the only thing I just want to say about this particular bylaw, I think it's the right thing for the town. It's long overdue. If you look at what we have already in town, we have presidential terrace, right, which
Correct.
is over fifty-five. It's happened to be run through the housing authority. But if you look at that development there, it's well appointed. It serves the needs of the community. If something like that were to emerge in town, but just happen to be overseen by a private developer, that's what we're talking about, right? If we can address the needs of our aging population, I'm glad to see the rental piece of it is, remains intact because, you know, it defeats the purpose of somebody selling their home just to buy another home, right? If somebody who's older does not want the burden of homeownership, hopefully this will be an option for them. And I just hope that during this process, whatever people's motivations are, that they, one, don't lie about what's in here, what it is and what it isn't. And then, two, we, that we don't look down on people who want the ability to rent. Because unfortunately, it can be very, very easy for people to take an attitude, an elitist attitude, that if somebody is renting, they're less than, and that's not the case. And I hope that's not what this bylaw brings out in people. I hope it brings out the best in people. And I hope that's what's reflected at town, at town meeting because that's not what this town's about, is to look down on people who might not be as rich as somebody else. And that's unfair. So that's all my, my only comment.
Very well said, Mr. Lona. So right now, we're just going to hold pending planning board. Yep.
Motion to refer.
That was already done. So we're, it's going to be on hold. We're just going to hold. And Article thirteen, stormwater management by law. I know that was part of the planning board's.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was at that meeting as well, and, you know, Mr. Kelly did a bang up job trying to explain it. In the planning board, they had a lot of builds and questions and concerns about it. And at the time, I was going to raise the point, but I didn't know if it was my role to do that, because I was there really to speak about the fifty-five bylaw. But it occurred to me, there's a couple of things that stood out. One, technically, the planning board has jurisdiction over all stormwater, but at some point, that's been delegated over to the Conservation Commission.
That's correct.
Right? I don't understand the motivation of when that was done or why it was done. So now you've got essentially two boards, one elected, one appointed overseeing issues, right, of stormwater. And so the planning board has had issues with it. I don't know if the Conservation Commission provided input, but what I would suggest is that we not go forward with this proposal, with this bylaw, scrap it, and then ask the Conservation Commission to have the chairman and a designee serve as a, and the, the planning board chairman and a designee to meet as a working group with the consultant or whomever, and then come back to the board of selectmen with a recommendation. The spring town meeting, well in advance, like, let's not wait until May.
Last minute.
We should have a recommendation by like January or February or March that both, both boards agree on and advise us. I mean, look, we're, we can dig into it, but they're the ones who have to live with it. They're the ones who have to implement it, and they should have input on it. And I think having a designee, the, the two chairs and a designee appointed by the chair to work as a, you know, as a unit, because then you don't have to deal with like open meeting law or whatever it is.
Correct.
Subcommittee.
Correct.
And then come back with a recommendation. That's my, that'd be my proposal, because we've looked, we've looked at this now for like three years. We cannot get off the, we can't get off the jump in this new members of the CONCOM. They may have a different view, but, right?
Yeah, I agree. My, my concern is, and it always has been, compliance with our MS4 permit, right? And, you know, I think you're spot on. Let, let this go, kick it, you know, to the spring town meeting for the simple fact that we just filed our two thousand twenty-three annual report, right? That's done in over with. Our next annual report is going to June thirty of two thousand twenty-four. We have an MS4 in Jan. now, right? I, I think selectman Lona mentioned, you know, having him work and back and forth with a working group to, to figure out the differences of opinion or whatever and hash this thing out. I think it's, a lot of it's good components of the bylaw, but there's discrepancies between the two boards. That's Mr. Lona just noted. Figure it out, bring something back. If things have changed in the last six months, year of, you know, being in compliance with MS4, that's what Mr. McQ came in, the last meeting and had the discussion with us. Let that be figured out with, with the engineers and, and a couple of members of each group, working, working group. Put them two together and say, this is what we want. I couldn't agree anymore. I've been at and just strike this, let it die. Jamie, do you need, do you need a motion that, that we're not going to take any action? If we don't take any action, it just gets removed?
It's not in the law.
So, Article fifteen? Or did I jump too far?
Article fourteen, sewer.
Um, so the sewer assessment by law, look, this is, this hasn't been touched in since two thousand and three, I believe. This is something that I've been working on with Mr. Kelly. I spoke with Dan and Kathy in water and sewer. And most importantly, David Garretowski is the one that does all of our betterment work for sewer. David, there's David Garretowski is his name. He's done a great job. It's kind of, he, he kind of did it and did a whole rewrite because he wasn't the original author of the bylaw in two thousand and three, let's say. And after he read it, he just thought that there was certain components of the, the old one that was just a bit confusing. There's been a lot of questions going back and forth. The big change, as of right now, and I shouldn't say it's a huge, super huge change, other than some, some rewording to bring us into the modern century, I guess I'd say, from two thousand and three. So it's twenty years old. It definitely needed to be updating. But the bigger change that my concern was is over some things that I've experienced happening with sewer, connection fees or the lack thereof. And I think it's unfortunate that, you know, we have a betterment, when there's an active betterment in the sewer system, which there is now, if anybody wants to tie into that, they have to pay what the original property owner has paid into. So that number, let's just call it fourteen thousand, it's a little bit over, fourteen four something. Well, we'll call it fourteen thousand dollars for the sake of this discussion. Somebody while that betterment is actually still rolling, which there's a couple of years left on it, they want to tie into that sewer system, they have to pay the fourteen five, okay? Anywhere else that that is gone, or there's been no, I should say, there's been no betterment ever ascertained to a sewer project, the fee's only sixty, six hundred and seventy-five dollars to tie into our sewer system. I think that's a completely unfair, unbalanced bylaw. And come to find out, Mr. Garretowski has helped me out tremendously in understanding a lot more about how this bylaw is done. There should always be, there should have always been a connection fee that the board, Board of Public Works back in the day, or this board could be charging a reasonable fee for what they call a sewer connection fee, privilege fee. So Mr. Garretowski's going through this thing. He's outlined a lot of good ideas on how we get to that and how we refer back to different things and make it a little bit more self-explanatory. If this, this bylaw does it, I would like a little bit more time to stay in communication with Mr. Garretowski. Maybe we can even get him in to the next meeting. I don't know if he's still on vacation, but if not, the gist of this bylaw basically does just that. We, the water and sewer commissioners can now say, it doesn't matter if there was ever a betterment charged to it. If there was a betterment charged to it, the town has a whereover betterment. Doesn't matter if it was two thousand and five and it was all done, being paid for, or the last one that just happened in two thousand and eight, and it's almost being done, paid for. We look at a chart, we say, yep, that's a phase, you're in that neighborhood, this is what it was, ten thousand bucks then, that's what you pay. That still holds true. But if, if somebody extends a sewer line, a private developer now, you'll capture that fee as well. So if somebody extends and puts in, and that's kind of the unfair part of a bylaw, if a private developer comes in and extends a main, a sewer main, three hundred feet up the road, and it hooks to the right or the left, and that person gets a hundred thousand dollars to put that sewer line in as a developer, he's also going to be charged for every individual house he punches into that sewer line that he just laid at the cost of himself as a developer, plus the original tying fee. He's going to pay in that same fourteen five for all the houses that he's tying into, but it's his pipe. You follow me? So the way Mr. Garretowski's outlining this is he said, okay, we're going to charge you the one-time fee, connection fee, like it's a one, because that's really what it is. One time you're plugging into that sewer infrastructure. You're going to go up there and do what you need to do, but you're going to pay a sewer privilege connection, privilege fee as well. And that will be determined by the water and sewer commissioners to tie into that main, because it will become part of the public sewer system at whatever time we determine, whatever development's done. So nothing's really changed in all the other calculations. It's just cleanup of the wording, but it gives us a little bit more oomph on how we get to fees. And if somebody's tying into the system that's, there's, there's never been a betterment, meaning a price tag ascertained to that area, we have the ability to charge a connection fee now, because technically it's the law, and we should have been doing it all these years. But we haven't. We've charged just a six hundred and seventy-five dollar, or whatever fee they call it, and have a nice day. So it's kind of like lopsided. And I think for the sewer users that are out there listening to this conversation is, it, it, it's not going to be, it's, it's not something that's going to go, oh, my God, I'm going to be able to lower your sewer rate, you know, by, by eighty percent. But what it is going to do is it's going to allow the town, through these extra connection fees, privilege fees, is to not rely so heavily on rate to build surplus, but to rely on connection fees, privilege fees, and the things of like, to have surplus. So what I'm saying to all you nine hundred and fifty sewer users, this would be a bylaw that puts like a safeguard in place, so to speak, to stop building surplus from somewhere else other than your pocket, the rate payer. That's really what this, this bylaw is helping do it too. So I, I would just, I, I really want to just hold this one as well. I think Mr. Kelly and I need a little bit more time to, you know, get a better scope of everything that the change and the moving parts of this with Mr. Garretowski. But that's the nuts and bolts of this article and what it's going to do for the town of Acushnet sewer users. Is that correct, Mr. Kelly, fair to say? So that's that. But I, I ask for a hold on this article, please. I had a hold on that.
Article fifteen and Article sixteen, I would ask for a hold on both articles. Earlier this morning, Attorney Eichmann came in with a change of wording, not a change of intent, but he wanted to make sure, going back, that the title for each and the way the properties held for each of the properties referenced, type of properties are done, built and suspended. So I think that's the description of it. He covered every different aspect of it.
So Article fifteen, for the people at home that are watching, it references the Russell Memorial Library for disposition. Article sixteen, a loss sizes under, that's in the town's ownership, under twenty thousand square feet. And we're going to hold both of those. Article seventeen?
There's minor wording changes from council. It's to see if the town will vote to approve by finding the necessary cost items contained in the initial year of a memorandum of agreement that amends three-year collective bargaining agreement with the AFSMI units and that the town appropriate funds necessary, if necessary, and/or confirm the use of previous appropriation thereof. The reason for that wording, this change, well, this article was to change the wording to make sure that since the various units in this collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI work different schedules, some are seven days, twenty-four hours, some are standard operating hours, and some work Saturday, and that affects the holiday schedules, et cetera. There was, it affects paid holidays, hours of work, overtime, clothing, longevity, and severe weather closing. So, uh, county council wanted to make sure that this approval
So, uh, town council wanted to make sure that this approval did not affect the actual funding and approval that has already been done by town meeting. That's why that wording is in place, but other than that, it's the same article. So, it's, it's a board one to...
Are you, are you okay with this?
Yes.
Article, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, I very much agree.
No funding's required?
No funding required.
Is there a motion to approve Article seventeen?
Subject to council's amendments.
Subject to council's amendment, is there a motion to approve, subject to council's amendment?
Second.
All those in favor?
Article eighteen is an article put in the warrant in case we come to an agreement with Team Street Local fifty-nine, uh, in the next couple of months.
Article nineteen, same thing really with steel workers.
Yep. So, I'd ask that both be included in the warrant.
Okay.
And funding will be added on town meeting floor if we, uh, come to an agreement.
And Article twenty, um, is going back to the citizens' petition to move the board of selectmen from three members to five members. Um, there's been some back and forth between, um, the town clerk and council, um, and it appears that, uh, there was a request for withdrawal, then the request for withdrawal was dropped on that petition, um, and they wanted to go forward with it, however, based on what I've read, um, from council to town clerk, um, special town meeting, um, when already called by the town requires a hundred signatures on the petition, and that petition received, I believe roughly forty, I'm just gonna say. Um, so, right now, we're just, the board of selectmen have the right to yank it and drop it off the warrant for failure, um, to have the required signatures under the law. Um, if it's done through a special town meeting, that's not been previously announced by the board, so if this was done in, say, June, late June, early July, that special town meeting would require two hundred signatures, but because this meeting has been, it was preliminary calls, um, it requires a hundred signatures, so the petition lacks the number of signatures to qualify to be on the warrant. Now, look, it can be up to the board's discretion if it wants to, um, drop it off the warrant. Um, I would ask that the board just hold off on that decision so that Ms. Labonte, the town clerk, myself and Mr. Kelly can make sure that we get confirmation of the law in writing from council to make sure that that's the authority that we have. It's, it's in writing already, but it hasn't been answered back properly, I don't know.
Isn't it in our bylaw too? I mean, I recall when there was a change to the DPW, it was for a special town meeting, it was a hundred, for annual town meetings, like ten, it shouldn't be in our bylaw.
It is. Something happened, there's miscommunication, whatever, whatever took place, I don't wanna get into the nuts and bolts of how these things transpired, all I'm trying to do is be as transparent, um, to Mr. DeRosa, the, the petitioner, quite honestly, and all those that signed the petition. Um, it's, it's being vetted now through council, you know, town administrator and town clerk. So, I'll, we'll have a better answer. Right now, that's the way it looks, so I don't wanna make any motions on this article until we can finalize it, Mr. Kelly and I, so Article twenty will hold. That looks about it, right, Mr. Kelly?
That is it.
All that and end up some final print.
The warrant has to be posted on the twentieth of October, so staff will start putting together our final version.
We can't do no final versions until we're all done getting...
No, I said we'll start.
Yeah, yeah, so whenever we can, the ones that we approved, I, I would assume, as long as the language is all right. Um, and, you know, the first three pages, we're gonna reword some of that stuff, some of that verbiage will change as well, Mr. Kelly, so we'll work together on that this week. So, um, I have talked to the town clerk on that date, and she would prefer that we have it, um, final print available on the nineteenth, because the twentieth is a Friday, and God forbid if something were to happen while we were going to do these postings, and so the nineteenth, I just wanna say, is the official date that we give to the warrant, to the town clerk, um, for posting purposes anyway, not to print, but for posting purposes.
Mr. Chairman?
And I just wanted to acknowledge and I apologize to the moderator, Mr. Les Dakin, the moderator, I apologize to you, Mr. Dakin, for not recognizing you in the room when we started this process, um, but Mr. Dakin is present, there he is, and present in the room, um, taking his notes as usual. Mr. Moderator, you have anything you wanna say while we're still in open session, sir?
Uh, I'd just like to compliment the board for their homework and their study of the issues.
Thank you.
And debating these and considering how it impacts the residents, so I thank you from my perspective, and Mr. Kelly and the town clerk, you've done a great job, and looking forward to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Dakin. Mr. Warner?
No, I was gonna just say, like, do we need to have, though you mentioned Saturday, should we post a meeting?
That's the next week. Yeah, so if you, I was gonna ask the board before we go into that, so we have a few articles on hold. Um, Mr. Kelly, my brain's about as fried as it can be, I know, we, we got some business to attend this week, um, I wouldn't wanna rush myself, um, trying to get all of this stuff squeezed in in two days, so if we can go maybe out to Monday, so we can make sure that we have everything we need wrapped up to reconvene with the board to approve whatever articles we just held, and it also gives you enough time to meet with the planning board in case they can't do something on Thursday, maybe they do a Zoom on Friday, um, but if we, if you gentlemen have availability on Monday...
I'm on April seventeen, eighteen, the sixteenth I can...
What's the sixteenth?
Monday.
Monday. That's perfect. All right, so Monday, and you...
Earlier the better, for me.
Ten o'clock? Ten o'clock?
Yeah, I can, I can do ten o'clock.
You good for ten?
I'm good for ten.
How about you, Ms. Faverres, you good for ten?
I'm good for ten.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, are you good for ten?
I'm in.
All right. There you go. We'll schedule a meeting, um, for Monday at ten A M. To, um, maybe some unfinished business, whatever, Mr. Kelly might need to throw up there, but really to, to finalize the, uh, remaining articles for the warrant, right?
Monday, ten sixteen?
Ten, ten o'clock or ten sixteen?
Oh, all right, I thought you were saying the date.
I'm not looking at a calendar, you asking me, do you draw numbers, I'm like, why, you wanna meet at ten sixteen now? What's, what's the significance of sixteen?
The, the date, sixteenth, Monday, the sixteenth, ten A M., is that what we said?
Yes, sir.
Oh, today's ten-ten.
So...
Things move by way too fast.
I want the camera guy.
The camera guy, hey, hey, camera guy, can you make it? You don't have a choice. So, the soil board meeting, uh, Mr. Kelly and I have been working on that as well, and the PJ Keating, um, asked for a continuance for Wednesday night's meeting, I'll also get that plug in now. Um, we will, we will not, um, be hearing anything on PJ Keating Wednesday night, for you folks in the audience, it will be postponed to a later date, and that date is uncertain at this time. And our next selectance meeting is possibly October twenty-fourth, I say that. We'll see what happens between now and then. So, we're all set with a meeting date, the next, actually, our next meeting date is October sixteenth at ten A M. Right, Ms. Hinkley?
You got it.
For the warrant, for the warrant, um, and any other business that may need to be conducted. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Thank you.